So. And we just wanted to. Kind of give an overview and explain what we're doing at our high school with call cred. And certifications, because there's a lot of different things going on and. And oftentimes people ask us about, you know, do we offer college credit and things like that? And so. Especially with a few of you being new, we wanted to share with you what that was about. So. I believe the high school sharing, I think it's Dr. Lazzondo that's going to be sharing. So.
Yes, thank you. Can I get the screen shared, Andrea?
It should be a go.
Oh, okay. Can Lisa, can you wave if you can see that? This is called cred. Okay. Thank you. Nice to you.
Right in front. I didn't realize that.
Right. All right. So thank you for having me this evening so we can explain how this works at the high school level. It can be confusing to a lot of people. So. I gave you, I sent anyway, kind of an all inclusive. Look at how it works, but I'm gonna just pare it down for you here a little bit. If that's okay. All right. So here's just a snapshot. At the high school, we currently offer 108 college credit opportunities. 108 college credits in those opportunities. And that's in addition to our 105 different high school classes that we offer. We have something called core dual credit classes, meaning they earn them at the high school. And they get their high school credit and call credit at the same time. It's taught by OHS instructors. Here are our. Core dual credit classes that we offer. And you can see here the number of credits that are for each of these programs. And who we articulate with, meaning who we work with to receive that credit, what what college institution? You can see part of those are TVCC for $45 a credit for students. But we also started articulating with OIT a couple of years ago. And found that we had a lot of success being able to meet their requirements in order to have a teacher teach the class. So for our dual credit classes, we have a total of 59 credit opportunities. And you can stop me anytime if you have a question. Then we have something called sponsored dual credit. We call them two plus two classes. You, it's the same type of thing. You're earning your earning high school credit plus the call cred. At the same time, and it's taught by OHS instructors. These credits are free to the student. These are all articulated through TVCC. And it's a total of 25 credits. Sorry, I had to turn my phone off. Okay. Then we have our TVT welding program. A lot of people know about this program. It's really well established and very popular here, very successful. It's all articulated through TVCC. They get college credits for free through that program, and it's a total of 24 credits. We have college choice and college choice just means that students can go on campus and take. Any class TVCC offers either on campus or online, provided TVCC has a room. And some of those are at a reduced fee. A lot of times our kids will. Take one of the classes that they class periods that they have here on campus and go over there. That's happened. We have that happen all the time. We have the Oregon Transferable Associate of Arts. So that basically is the opportunity for kids to. In combination with what they do at OHS through our call cred program and anything that they do with TVCC or OIT can come together. As they earn their high school diploma to also simultaneously earn their associates. Some additional opportunities we have here. You can see for our CTE programs and other certification programs. We've got the Oregon Teacher Program that we brought back and. That gives students preferred admission and scholarship to EOU. Our nursing program that has, we added phlebotomy to last year. Our welding program, those are all certification programs. Our manufacturing program just started last year. We're still working on the certifications for that. It does take a while. And we're starting to build that program. It's very exciting with 3D printing and lathes, mills and. And all kinds of engineering. We have our early childhood education program that can result in the credential for that if a student pursues that. New news last year is our personal training program, which allows you to get. Your certification through NASA as a certified personal trainer. And be immediately employable. Our culinary arts at this time, culinary arts is really difficult to articulate with with a college. So. There's, there's not really certifications associated with it, other than your food handlers. Business and computer science are still in development for certifications. We added drones to our computer sciences. That's a, an industry that's become. A need everywhere. And we also brought back military science, and that's actually taught by Staff Sergeant Gallagher. And it's for exploration for people to learn more about the military, see if they're interested, that sort of thing. If you look at the, everything that's asterisked, that is new in the last six years. So a couple of things to think about when you think about, a lot of people want a lot, a lot of call cred at the high school. I would love to have a lot, a lot of call cred at the high school. These are things we have to take into consideration, though. I'm calling them like the realities for OHS and for call cred. So the reality for OHS or for all high schools in Oregon is that. You don't need a master's degree anymore to teach high school. So, so people who are teaching high school don't necessarily have that master's degree. But colleges require it and also some experience in the subject. So if we want to bring on a call cred class, we have to have somebody on staff. Who's qualified under the college requirements to teach it. High school levels, high school classes are taught at one level, obviously a high school level for that credit. When that class is offered in conjunction with call cred, it has to be taught at two levels. So that the, that we can meet the, the college credit requirement as well. Call cred classes because of that are more work. The stipend that the, that teachers are given for teaching a call cred is very small for the extra work. It's, it's about $300. And it is, and call cred has to work with the number of staff that we have. We can't, we don't, we can't just hire more staff in order to get more call cred. And we also have to make sure that our staff is taking care of their primary responsibility, which is giving, giving kids opportunity to earn their credits toward graduation. Call cred is something we do that's extra that we grow because we need to, and it gives opportunity, but it, it can't pull from our regular class resources either. So it's a balance. It's also important to know that call cred offerings are not static. They change all the time depending on student need, interest, the colleges requirements. Funding, all sorts of things. So some celebrations we've had are, we've got an extremely healthy offering of call cred and certification programs at our high school. We've acquired more than six or six more CTE and experience opportunities in the last six years. And we offer four more credits than even we did last year. And in checking our records. We currently have the highest call cred offering that can be tracked, traced back through 12 years of our historical documentation. It's as far back as we could go. And going forward, we're very interested in articulating more opportunities for students in the areas they're interested in. And to determine what those areas would be, we actually have started this year. Participating in an aptitude test called U-Science that a lot of the schools are, are taking. It's going to help us. Help kids figure out their areas of interest and strengths, and we'll take that information and. Pull that back and look at it not only individually, but on a school scale and see if that. Is in line with what we're offering or the major interests in line with what we're offering. And that could lead us in lots of different directions. So we're pretty excited about that. And that's all I have. Any questions?
This is Tom Brick. I have a couple of questions. Talk me through. The recruitment process, for lack of a better term, of students who. Want to take these courses. Or that we as, as you know, staff or administration see they would value, they would benefit from such classes.
So every student meets with their counselor to go over their transcript and what their next steps are. They, that starts in the eighth grade, actually with the eighth grade family meeting to determine kind of what a student would be interested in, because a lot of these programs, as you can see that we have here at the high school. Are long-term programs. So kids have to make a decision fairly early in their high school career. And the, the honest answer is that when they're freshmen, very, very few students. Know what they want to do. So it's, it evolves over the time that they're here and every time they're meeting with their counselor systematically. Every time they're getting experience in another area, every time they have to take a CTE class, because we require everybody to take CTE at least one time to gain some, some experience. They're having conversation with, with those of us who are knowledgeable about what their options could be. So. Recruitment, other than we do college fairs and we do. We do that kind of thing, but I, and we always advertise to kids through. Our CHAMP system, which is something we do once a week. We don't advertise this every week, but once it's, it's a system we use weekly. Kids know what CHAMP is. We advertise what classes there are. We've had teachers put together kind of like a. Like a sales pitch for their class, and we've put it out to students so that they can see what's available. But it really, you know, other than that, and, and having parent meetings, we've not really had any other way to, 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 I guess. Recruit kids for those classes. But we do have additional plans in the works. To do a, like a class fair, I guess I should say, and a CTE fair that's just here for our kids in our building. Because we realized that a lot of them don't even know everything we have to offer. So that's actually on the books for this year.
Hey, how about for parents? How do parents? Become aware of what programs there are, what CT or what. Call cred. Classes are available, opportunities are available.
So most of that happens through their visitation with the counselor and their, and their child when they're, when they're picking their classes and they're doing that sort of thing. We have done, and we did this year, a high school tour where for parents, where parents came. And we walked through the whole building. We talked about all those programs as well. One thing that I was noticing the other day that we have to work on, I think, is we need to do a better job of listing on our website. What call cred classes are available. And so that's something definitely we can do, but we also have a college and career coordinator. Full time. Well, she's half time, but she's here the whole day. She's also our parent involvement coordinator. And she does quite a few nights where she invites parents in and they talk about college and career.
How many students do we currently have? In the call cred program or taking call cred classes?
I don't, I don't have that number right now. I'd have to go back and ask our counselor because you, you saw the different levels of classes. So I'd have to, he'd have to pull from several different places. I didn't get that information. I'm sorry, but I can get it for you.
Okay. And my last one is. As you were speaking, we're talking about needing master's degrees. I remember that our faculty at TVCC does do not, they have to have master's degrees or PhDs. But they don't necessarily have to have educational experience or being a classroom teacher unless that's changed. So would it be possible for us to recruit or hire? People with masters or PhDs in those respective areas to teach those classes for our kids where we don't have. High school teachers with those degrees.
Well, I don't, I mean, anything's possible. And I, as far as, as we go on our end, I don't have. I think Nikki would have to answer that question because that's, that sounds like it would be hiring additional personnel if I'm understanding right.
Yeah. Is if Mr. Norton's on. I'd actually like for him to comment about how licensure works. And, and how licensure with TSTC works. So. We could hire someone who has a master's degree but not a teaching degree, but then we would have to place them on. Either an emergency teaching license or put them on a, on something provisional until they can earn. They'll, they still have to go back and go back to school to get their teaching degree. So they have a certain amount of time. I don't know. Eric, are you on?
I am. So that's correct. I mean, we have engaged with certain individuals that do fit that description. But a lot of times they don't want to go back and run through a MAT program with a student teaching component. Because in Oregon, that's what, what, what our licensure agency, agency is looking for is that. That they go through an MAT program and pick up some of those classes that are absent from, say, a master's program. We've all been in college and we have college professors that have no business be in front of children, adult learners possibly. But so there's a big difference. And so, like you said, we have engaged with certain individuals in the past, but they have just decided. Yeah, I'm not going to go back to school and do that extra work. I have my master's degree or my doctor's degree, but that is a requirement in Oregon.
It used to be that to get an Oregon teaching license, every person had to have a master's degree. And that changed some time ago as they recognized the shortage in educators. And so, quite honestly, probably. A good majority of our folks do have master's degrees or close to. And so. But very, but they have to have in order to articulate these colleges, they do have to have a master's degree. And just.
Nikki.
Yes.
I would say, though. If someone does have a master's or doctorate, in order to qualify for Oregon licensure, it's just an additional year. We're not talking two or three years. It's just additional. A one-year program. But sometimes even that, and sometimes depending on the situation, we might even help or assist with, with that. But most of the experience I've received from college professors is that. It's almost like an insult, like I feel like I'm higher than that. I shouldn't have to go back and do that. But what they're missing is that teaching of adolescence. And, and the student teaching component. Is what they're lacking.
So do the TVCC teachers teach our. Nine through 12 or 10 through 12 students?
It depends.
Is it all high school teachers?
Well, TVCC professors, it all depends because there are some PVC professors that have gone through MAT programs. But not all of them. If they do, if they haven't gone through a MAT program with that student teaching component, they'd have to go back and, and take that.
Okay, okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
And, and I haven't mentioned this to anybody out loud yet, so I could be completely off base, but. Somebody mentioned to me the other day that, you know, what about the possibility if we were trying to offer more? Call cred to our students, and we have all these barriers with the, or mentioned about having our own staff do it. Is it possible to offer the space, if we can find it on campus, to have TVCC instructors come over? And teach our kids the TVCC class on our campus. That eliminates at least that barrier for them having to go over there. I don't know. I haven't engaged in conversation with anybody about that, though. But maybe that's an option. I don't know.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Jody. Eric, thank you.
So Jody, I have one quick question. And if you don't have the number up ahead, that's fine. I can, ballpark is fine. How many students? And I'm sure it varies per year, but on average roughly, how many students do we have graduate? High school already have obtained their associate's degree?
Um, we typically have, I would say two or three every year. It's quite an undertaking to get that down. You're basically doing double school. For, for almost four years. So not a lot of kids take that on. I don't know that I could ever see us getting to a point that we'd be able to continue to manage. The high school credit requirement and have enough opportunity on campus. For you to complete all of your associates requirements. That would take a lot more staff and space. But typically two or three every year.
Sure. That makes sense. It's a pretty. All order to, to be able to complete all that.
Yeah, and those students are currently that are receiving their associates are taking, you know, all their. Call cred offerings that we have at the high school. Then they're also taking independently those courses through, through whatever institution and. And I know that we have some, even some staff members here who have, have kids that are taking a lot of called credits and, and they're really good students and it's, it's, it's. A lot to do. I mean, it's, it's a challenge and so we're. But, but we do have, I will say. We do have a lot of kids taking college credits or, or getting college credits through either some of these programs. Or just taking classes independently and. The one thing that we've done this last year is we're paying for, you know, any student that wants to take a college course, we're paying for that. And so trying to encourage more students to do so. And again, as, as Jody said, some of them are. Going on campus to take those, for example, at TVCC, or they might be going home and taking it online. They might even be going to a computer lab or doing it right at the school. So.
And that, and it, and there isn't a college that can, that I, I mean, a college, I'm sorry, a high school that I've heard of anyway. Who's able to offer everything to get it all, you know, kind of under one roof, but. I think that from, in my opinion, we should always be looking for more opportunities. It's just important that we balance it with what our resources are. So. You know, I, I work with what's in front of me and, and hopefully we can make some more things work. Articulating with OIT. Has been helpful. They have cheaper credits and they actually will waive credits if we can show hardship for a student. And they have been pretty flexible in their articulation requirements for our teachers. So. Yeah, I mean, we're, we're, we've been building steadily, at least since I've been here, we've been building steadily. So. You know, we're, we're looking forward to what's to come.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chad?
Well. Thanks for inviting the middle school. Here to discuss, in the last board meeting, we had some concerns, a little bit about our policy for students attending. Co-curricular activities. We have since met with a number of parents and community members formally. We, we've tried to reach out to people. They've come to our games and trying to get a. Understanding. And for the most part, in fact, all of really, we have some really caring people, very respectfully. We appreciate them coming in and talking to us. That's definitely the most productive way to do what's best for students. Most of the parent concerns, I think, were kind of, have kind of been addressed. I just want to review on some of where. Some parents can attend with their student because they're working or have other obligations. Wanting to have a safe place for kids after school. Wanting our athletes to be supported and wanting to promote and encourage school spirit and also more. Be able to model some sportsmanship at our co-curricular activities. So we were able to. These are, these are nice conversations because we, these are some of the things we want to. We want our athletes supported. We want our program supported. We want more kids out. We want to provide a safe place and, and this all started from wanting to provide a safe place and, and following the guidelines that were set out by ODE and. OHA regarding. COVID and spacing and, and masks in order to keep kids in school. And not everyone, most people come to us remembering what it was like when they were in middle school. And. Of course, you know, Mrs. Longgori and I, we've been dealing with losing years of athletic. Season one year. We've lost. Some kids have been, have to go home and isolate because of volleyball. Issues where the state allowed students to work, not wear masks. And then all of a sudden, because they're, they're being involved in our co-curricular programs. They're now not able to come to school until they can test back in, which is usually six days or so. So. Having those conversations were, were super productive. And we know that the more people, more kids we have involved, the better. The last time in 2019, we had some fantastic test scores and won some district championships. We were super, we were competing and now we're back to just trying to build up our program. So when these parents come in, they're. They want to see what they've seen at the middle school. And it's just, we, we have the conversations regarding safety and. And supervision. And probably most, what's become most important to me outside of the safety is just the consistency that we have in our systems. And so setting up our building, spent a lot of time keeping kids three feet apart and masks. Getting kids into the cafeteria, getting them out when they're able to take off their mask and eating and. And we have all these systems that are super important because if a student gets. You know, they're, they're exposed to COVID and they gotta go home. That's, they're missing out on in-person school, which, which is a super big deal. And we don't want that to be something that we've created. And we haven't had any issues with that in our school. We have. CD charts on the buses. We've got CD charts in the classrooms. We've got, we spread out in the cafeteria. We have not had any kids. Have to stay home and lose out on their education because of our systems. So through these conversations, and Miss Longgori, you're welcome to jump in. Anytime, but. After these conversations, we think. Towards boys basketball is going to start in January. We definitely want to open it up. Those parents that have, that have discussed with the school and signed off on allowing other people outside of their parent or guardian to take their kids home. But maybe they, they're able to come in with their kids. We think, we think we can manage that, but that, that does take some time to do something else that. We really want to open up our student sections. But as you, as you know, you guys live in Ontario. There's not. Oregon Health Authority has some rules that we're all supposed to be following, and those are, those aren't always consistently followed, because this is the fault of school because we care about kids. And we want them to be in school. But that's not what they see at home. So we get them, we, we're consistent throughout the day and then open up a student section where they. They see adults come in, Eric comes in. Gets, goes buys a soda, goes get some popcorn and they eat the same bag of popcorn for two hours and they're sitting there with their mask off. And those aren't the expectations of, that's not what we set our kids up to, to do. So we're the guys that have to sit there and try and manage this. Keep our kids safe. Education is comes first, but at the same time, we want our kids to have a safe place. They'll have these. Experiences and supporting each other. It's just, it's just part of school. So we, we are working on coming up with a safe way to open up the student section. A lot of caveats in there, but we've got, we've received a lot of feedback from parents. We know where they're at. Oftentimes they just don't know what we're having to deal with and what, when we have to. Let a volleyball team know that they can't come to school for seven for, and test back and their parents, it's tough for them to find a, a test to come back and. I, you know, Miss Longgori was there when we pulled our eighth grade volleyball team, half of them, I don't want to play sports anymore. I'm done with volleyball and there. I need to stay up on my classes, which was super exciting for us because that's, you know, we want, we want education to be first, and it was, but at the same time. We want it to be safe. So that's the positions that we come from, and it's not always what's seen in the community. It's not seen often at other schools. But our successes come from our being consistent and clear with expectations and being fair across the board. And so trying to figure that out. With what everything else is going on. It's not always easy.
But it's also important, Chad, for you to discuss the other safety issue of students coming to our games without parents. You know. Situation, the safety risk that it puts those students in.
Situation, the safety risk that it puts those students in. Because we're hoping COVID is not gonna be forever.
Yeah, you know, uh. It's, it's real interesting, uh, just looking at the supervision policies that the board has. Uh, when students are there unsupervised and they're on our facilities, we're responsible for their safety. And that safety used to be making sure they get home with their parents, but it also means safety and keeping them in school, like that's, that's our number one priority, right? So. Our coaches have to stay until all those kids, we make that transfer to a guardian or someone that they're able to release to. And we walk it around the middle school, uh, in two thousand twenty-one, there's, there's a lot of things going on and um. And we do have a lot of kids that parents are working and we know they want a safe place, but at the same time, um, releasing them. Into our community, you know, we don't always know exactly what's going on there. So there's, there's a lot of things. That really go into this. So once we have those conversations about supervision, about making sure the kids are safe. And just some of the things that we normally do that they just kind of take for granted, you know, our our staff. Our, our, our kids are supervised all the time. Uh, you know, we don't, we don't tolerate bowling, you gotta be there. You know, you just don't cut these kids loose and and hope things happen, you make things happen, that's what we do at the middle school, so. It's tougher, this, this situation is especially tough for us, so supervision and ju- and just some of our programs being consistent. And then being able to communicate all this, all these things, because everybody's got a different level of. You know how they're gonna. Follow uh protocols and you know, there's obviously differences in how people, people parent and what they're gonna allow their kids to do. So allowing, having the parents come with the kids. Uh, and transfer that responsibility and letting those families make some of those decisions. That's where we landed in August, it's worked, we haven't had anybody um not. Uh, have to be isolated from any of our co-curricular activities, uh, activities have been great, they've been safe and um. You know, but opening it up again is is something that we we want to work towards.
So. Just a thought, one of the things you, and I can absolutely see people doing this with the food, right? Oh, I gotta drink, so I'm gonna sit here for three hours or however long your game lasts and take a sip every minute, so I don't ever have to mask on. Can we just stop selling concessions if that's an issue? And not allow food or drink and take away that excuse, uh, they they bring it.
Well, let me tell you, concessions are a big moneymaker for providing celebrations for our kids. All the money that's made in concessions, those, Mary Jo can tell you this as well, it goes directly. To students, there's not a lot of ways that we can um make money.
Funded.
Uh, fundraise, we can have one fundraiser a year, we don't want to overwhelm the community. But when we have incentive incentives, um, celebrations, that's where that money comes from. It's really important for us to be able to build that um budget for our students. Or if um, you know, there's something that that's specific to students and that they need, but we can't get it somewhere else. That is, that's where we get that from. Chad relies on it. Um, heavily at the end of the year where our, when our students make academic growth, we get to travel here or travel there. It's important in providing extras for our students.
True, makes sense. And stopping it, I mean, asking, having masks and asking to wear those things, but then uh. Let's make sure you don't need food in your, in your bag there, right? It's so, it's so tough because you want to have positive relationships and everybody's in different places.
You don't want to take everything away from them.
Yeah, and I mean, they're they're hon- honestly, if you went to see our games, most of our kids are there to. To have some cheap concessions, staying out with their friends just a little bit longer in the day. Um, I really, I wish they were more engaged in the games and, you know, when everyone else, when they might see a good play and everybody's like, yeah. But if you watch the kids, they just want to be kids and 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 they haven't been able to be kids, so it's, this is really tough, this is not what we'd like to see. Uh, and then trying to manage, manage this and and put relationships, jeopardize those things. Uh, every time you add another piece, it's just one more thing and unless you're the guy that has to do it. It's really tough to know exactly what that's like and most of parents have understood that when we talk to them. Just don't, just don't think about it unless you're that guy. It's no fun to be that guy. I don't know a lot of businesses that are getting warned and stuff like that, it's. I don't know, but I just don't, I don't see it being modeled in the community all that much, so. So it's confusing, but it needs to be consistent at the middle school, that's, that's where we live and it's, it has been.
And and I, excuse me, it's important to note too, if you, it's five thirty. Our, our beats, is this still working? Our B team games would just. Be getting over and eighteen games would just now be starting. You can look outside and see how dark it is. Students who don't come with the parents. And maybe they don't follow the expectation and they have to be told to leave or they leave on their own. This is what we're releasing them to and that is not a good feeling. Um, that isn't safe. Um, that's where you have fights. If somebody or that's where you have shoplifting at Red Apple, that's where nothing good really happens unless a student is leaving. With the parents and we don't know where they're going, we don't know that they're gonna be safe. If a student arrives with a parent and leaves with that parent. We, we're making that transfer, right, that in there, and we're not putting kids in harm's way.
So, and I, and that's fine, that's good. Um, the other question I would have is, and this is what I hear from, I've heard from different parents and stuff, and you guys have probably heard this too, is. Okay, so my son wants to go to the game and he wants his buddy to come along, but their parent can't be there. So what can I do as a parent? To be able to take my son's buddy to the game with me so that they can.
Yes, I'm glad you asked that and I thought you talked about that, but we have discussed it. I'll let you speak to that, Chad.
You know, there's a. It's, it's interesting when you look at the, the uh OHA's guidance, a lot of it's about uh in certain. Um, households, so in this day and age, a household looks a lot different than it what it did a long time ago, so. Yeah, we've got, you know, oftentimes two or three families that work together, someone brings the kids in the morning, someone picks them up at night. Someone picks them up for activities and their household becomes pretty, become pretty big and. And for the most part, so when you're talking about, you know, COVID exposures and stuff like that, you know, we definitely don't want to be encouraging that, but we know it's there, so. They can um. You know, they can, they can come to the school, let us know who can be released, as long as the parents lets us know, it's, it's usually they do it during registration, but they can update that. List all the time, um, and it'll, it'll be, it'll be more difficult, uh, because. It's gonna be more work to do, but um, yeah, we want, we understand those things and we want them, it's just really, it's just really tough to. Yeah, this is my uncle and like, well, how do you know if you've never seen him before and.
Yeah. Is there a formal, I'm sorry, is there a formal notification process where Mr. Johnson has to come in and say. I would like these three brothers' children, would you come with me or do they just show up?
Well, they, um, so if that were the case, then what what a family would do is they would call um and say. Um, I'm going, like, a parent can say, I want all of these people to to be on my pickup list. So my, my children have access to pick up my kids or to do this or to do that. And we out have all of that in our student information system, we call it synergy, and so. Um, they would just need to make changes to that and so that would go in our, in our synergy listed in there and it says. Um, it gives the parents and then it would give um. Emergency and then it also could say, okay, to pick up and things like that, so that's kind of where we go to access. Uh, to know if a student can go with someone else and and, you know, we, we. We don't want to say, no, that can't happen.
Yeah.
We're not saying no, but we're saying is, um, we don't also want it to be abused.
Well, and you can't look up each child as they come through the door, right? So you have to start memorizing who to come with who.
Unless you're that guy, you don't know what that's like.
Understood, it's tough.
And it's important, it's a song, yeah, I remember why it's.
Oh, and it's important, it's, lean back a little bit, okay. It's important. It's important, whatever, wh- whomever the adult is. Follow, requires those students to also follow the guidelines, that they're not just there to defy the expectation that we've already put in place. And unfortunately, that happens. Unfortunately, that happens and that's a poor example for students and it doesn't set them up for success.
You let me know when I'm complete, when we're complete. We'll stay here, we'll answer questions. Uh, it, it's, it's just, everything's a little, got a little caveat to it, but. Um, parents can look up, they've got an app that that actually shows them on the printer view, who's on the emergency list and oftentimes. It happens a lot, I, I thought this person was on there. And so, yeah, we have to be there with people's personal information, looking it up and making sure and. I mean, kids are important, it's, it's why we're all here and so these become very. Uh, interesting situations and stressful at times and, but they're super important and.
Because on top of that, we're also running a game. We're also welcoming people into our, our facilities, Chad's running the sports, the activity. And and we just have a lot going on.
And the other thing to mention here is that, that when students are unsupervised. It often, anything that happens runs over into the next school day. And when I say that, because I, I used to work at the high school and I used to work at the middle school, I know that. You know, um, after a bigger game, I might spend three hours the next morning. Tracking down that stolen phone because the parent is mad, but another student in the student section stole their phone. And I have to follow up on it, or they left school and they went to, or they left the game and they met up at the park and they had a fight. And then, so the next morning, I'm dealing with, somebody took a video and I'm tracking down who took video and I'm tracking down the kids who started the fight and how it started. And sometimes that can even turn into a full day's work of. Cleanup, I guess, if you will, and so that, I called that the, the, the extracurricular fallout. All the stuff that we have to deal with and, and the, the hard part about that is it just takes us away from. From, you know, what I would consider the really important stuff and um. And that, that just plain and simple, it happens and it happens when kids are unsupervised and um. And it's a challenge and so. I would say, you know, these guys are trying to do the best that they can to have safe games. To have games that parents can enjoy coming to and to keep kids safe and supervise them and. There is no easy way. Uh, to, to make everyone happy because obviously some parents do, they, they're busy and they, I gotta go, I gotta go grocery shopping. So I'm gonna drop you off at the game, so I don't have to fight you at the grocery store and then I come back and pick you up. Um, or parents aren't home and the kids go to the games and so I think that it's gonna take some time. To work through this and how do we, how do we work with kids who don't have parents at home that want to come to the games? How are we gonna deal with those kids and how are we gonna deal with, if a parent says, yeah, so-and-so is gonna spend the night with us? And um, you know, what can I do? And the, the, the one thing you can do is you can call and talk to either one of these two. And they will either answer their phones, but they'll call you back if they're not available and they'll work through those issues with you. That's, that, that is the one thing that they will do and um, I think eventually, as we keep working through this. You'll find the middle ground.
And I think Chad mentioned this, we're working on updating this for our next season. Um, because with everything else on our plates and our teams' plates. Um, it's just not possible right now to implement it in the middle of a season and expect that we're gonna keep kids safe.
You know, one thing I don't think I mentioned was uh. We, you know, a couple of parents were like, well, why don't you, let's incentivize student, let's incentivize the student section. So if you don't have any discipline points, you know, there's, there's some more opportunities to be able to come participate and. So there have been some other things that opened our eyes to this crisis, not crisis, but definitely an issue, it was a crisis for some people. Um, that's, uh, but uh, yeah, there, I think it was still being communication and we're always trying to get better, so.
Any other comment? One, I thank the both, I, I too have talked to several parents about this situation, they were upset. And we discussed the issue of safety. And they reminded me, you know, they were talking about when they were in middle school, they were in high school. Maybe twelve to fifteen years ago. And I just told them that I don't think Ontario is the same Ontario that was twelve or fifteen years ago.
Or even five years ago.
It's a lot different than it was fifteen years ago. We had a good conversation and in the end, we talked about what you're doing that believes is what's best for kids. Their safety. And that's where I trust you, making those decisions, what's best for kids. Uh, and you know, parents are gonna be upset and I get it. I also, when I talked to one gentleman, I just told him, we're, you know, we have a, a child that's missing. From our home, from his home. And we still haven't found them. And I know that would be absolutely agonizing. To you all, if you have a child that somehow got out of or left the job or left the game. And somehow, something that possibly be a captain. We would never.
And that's similar to something I spoke about with the parents as well, is I'd rather. Much have us in a situation that a parent's upset that their student couldn't attend because they weren't with an adult. Than have a parent distraught because their student is hurt or missing or they got in a fight or. It's just not safe, bottom line, and, and to see kids walk off in the dark. That's not a safe, that's not, that's not keeping them safe. And sometimes, you know, we'll get, well, my mom's coming, my mom's coming, my parents coming, oh, they just told me to walk. And I don't know if you've seen middle schoolers in the winter in this, they're wearing shorts.
Yeah.
Lip flops, you know, not always the, the right, the, the proper attire. It's not safe. Our students are from eleven years, start at eleven years old at the middle school. And to say, okay, go ahead, bring your kids and then if when it's time to go, it's dark. You know, I don't know who's gonna pick them up, they're walking away and that's just not a safe place.
Chad, I believe so, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. Okay, we'll see you in the board meeting.
Uh, consent items, consent items, questions and expressions. Are there any issues or concerns with the consent agenda?
Really quick, I just wanted to make mention of the policies. So. You all passed, or this board passed the um. Policy ACD, which is every student belongs and since then, the um. They've come out with some additions to that, so that's what that is, um, and that's a requirement uh per Division twenty-two standards. The other policy, um, which was um forwarded to us from OSBA, we couldn't figure it out because. When I went in, policy GDEA, we have that policy currently, but it is um a worker's comp. Policy, so Andrea emailed um Rick Sackey at OSBA. And he said, OSBA retired the policy on workers' comp. And then he said, a couple of years ago, legislation was passed requiring the workplace harassment policy. At that time, we recycled the GDEA code and assigned it to workplace harassment. So our recommendation is to delete the workers' comp policy as it's not required and adopt. Um, the workplace harassment policy, which is GDEA, and they just reassigned it.
And they just reassigned those. So I just wanted to provide some clarification to that.
And the other one, the G P E A.
A R.
A R is the first.
Yeah, and that's administrative rules of that. And generally, the board doesn't have to adopt, it doesn't have to formally vote on that, but we always try to put A Rs in front of you.
Excuse me, about G B. The new G V E A, sorry. It seems redundant with the was it G B N A? Um, and they both have components to investigate and yeah, to investigate at least. So I mean, how are we, how are we breaking that out?
Yeah, so my understanding is the new policy, the G V E A is specifically toward just workplace harassment. Whereas G B N A is a broader policy that encompasses other issues. And there's lots of these in the board policies that overlap and kind of have some overlap with other things like the various public complaint processes. And there's other, there's other policies, I can't remember what time I had, they're, they exist in personnel and other sections. So this is my understanding is this is just a more narrowly tailored policy specifically of workplace harassment, not including these other things that G B N A goes over.
I have one agenda change. We were going to provide a reading of the policy letter or the apology letter to Dr. Elizondo, but she has submitted a a letter to the board. I discussed that letter with council. The letter is, meets the our policy and our requirements. So I proposed that we put Dr. Elizondo's letter in the business section as number four. A reading of her, of her letter.
So I'm confused. What she's submitted, what's?
She submitted a letter to us.
Okay.
Did we receive that letter?
Yes, we got it this afternoon at 8:00.
We didn't receive it.
But the rest of the board hasn't had a chance to see it.
Sent a note out as soon as I got it. Andrew sent an email out on it. We can, we have copies here available.
Yeah, I didn't get that email. I haven't had a chance to see that letter.
Yes, it'd be really tough to vote on adding something that we want to know.
Well, it's a letter from, from Dr. Elizondo. We were going to read, we were going to read an apology letter to that. She's responding to that.
Yes, I mean, I don't know if this is on. So based on the last board meeting, there was gonna be an apology letter for the board. My understanding is Dr. Elizondo has indicated she no longer has to go down that course of action. She provided a letter that she was requested to be read. Put the matter rest at this point then. So the matter, the issue was, did that go on a comment? Did it go on unfinished business? And I think it can go to either place. But that's why Chair Greglo is proposing that it be an unfinished business at this point then, or item number four of business. Is that, is that the decision?
So what, I guess, what's, what's the ask? I mean, modifying what we voted on? I mean, because does that mean that, that entire agreement is out?
Yeah, that, that would be the, the, her indication, the substance of the letter, whatever viewed is essentially we're not gonna go any further than this. No hold harmless agreement, no payment, no apology letter. And that's, she, she essentially says that in her letter and she just wants that read.
You're, you're asking if there are actions she's requesting. Oh, no, I was, I was asking what, what, what the, what we are putting on the agenda.
I mean, I guess confusion is, is we haven't seen the letter, so I don't know what I'm voting on.
We'll find out.
Well, you wouldn't know unless you've heard it.
So is, there's no action being taken on that?
No action being taken on it. Just to read the letter itself.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'd like to put it as the agenda number four of business. We need a motion for that agenda change.
We can't do that in this session. We have to wait until the board.
But are we? Okay. We're gonna have it.
I mean, I prefer to see the letter first before I.
See the letter, the letter's here. So, yeah, so it can be reviewed before.
Yeah, I prefer it out. Yeah.
That's it. What time's dinner ready?
Yes.
Okay, why don't we take 10 minutes for dinner, 15 minutes for dinner, and then we'll come back and move into executive session.
The board will now meet an executive session under. ORS one nine two dot six six zero F. To consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. Which allows the board to meet an executive session for that purpose. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend. Representatives of the news media are allowed to observe the executive session. But are directed not to report on any of the deliberations of the executive session. At the end of the exec, executive session, the board. Will return to open session.